Events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to the February 27, 2022 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Before I introduce the board, we do have an interview for a candidate for the Budget Recommendations Committee that will conduct down in the Wheelwright Room, and we should resume in about 10 minutes. Thank you.
As the hour is 6:50 p.m., I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to the February 27, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the board. There are three of us physically present this evening. We have two members of our board who are joining us virtually via Zoom because they're unable to practically, physically be here. So I'm going to start by introducing them. We have Selectwoman Lovey Roundtree Olaf. Good evening.
I'm going to assume you said me. So this is Lovey. I'm here in the room by myself.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, just muffled a little bit. So I wasn't sure.
Okay. Could be me. And then we have our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Alone in the room.
Great, thank you. To my left, we have our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
And to Selectwoman Gilman's left, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
And all the way down to the left, we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy filling in for Town Manager Rustine, who's on vacation this week. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome.
We have our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel. Good evening, Joanna. And my name is Nico Papakosinides. I'd like to start off by opening up for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with any comment to the Select Board. We do ask, though, that if your comments relative to anything on the agenda, you wait till that agenda item comes up. There's no public comment. We will move on. Ask our Police Chief, Chief Pullen, to come to the podium swearing in. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Good evening, members of the board. So tonight, we're going to recognize the swearing in of our Patrol Sergeant, Sonya Robichaud. Sonya Robichaud grew up in East Kingston and is graduate of Exeter High School. She began her journey in law enforcement as an Exeter Police Dispatcher over a decade ago. Then, when an opportunity arose in 2011, she went on to become a full-time police officer for the Town of Plastow. In July of 2016, Sonya returned to the community she loved and to the Exeter Police Department, this time as a police officer. During her police career, she has earned multiple certifications. She's a defensive tactics instructor trained in jujitsu, a rape aggression defense instructor, and an expandable baton instructor. Sonya is also one of the few women who are certified to ride a police motorcycle in New England and enjoys patrolling Exeter on the Police Harley-Davidson whenever the weather permits. Sonya was assigned to the Exeter High School as a school resource officer from 2016 to 2022. During her time there, she made many impactful and long-lasting relationships with student and staff alike. The role of a sergeant is a very difficult one. It's difficult from that transition from a patrol officer to the sergeant. The officers rely heavily on them for quick and reliable decisions. And the chief, myself, and my staff also rely heavily on sergeants to make the right decisions. Now, we will witness Sonya take her role of oath, and she'll have her badge pinned on her by her daughter Dory and her son Nolan. And I'd also recognize Town Clerk Andy Kohler for taking some time tonight to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will bear faithful and true allegiance to the United States of America and the State of New Hampshire and will support the Constitution thereof so help me God. I, Sonya Robichaud, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as police sergeant according to the best of my abilities agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and enforce the laws of the State of New Hampshire so help me God. Congratulations, Sonya.
Thank you. And if you haven't noticed, the true first responder family with the fire here and police.
Chief, again, thank you for sharing these moments with the Select Board and with the town. I think it's fantastic that we're able to do this swearing in here at the Select Board meetings. And thank you for making that happen.
Thank you as well. We enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Nice job pinning it on.
Congratulations.
I always love starting our meetings.
That is one of the best parts of the job. Indeed. Okay. Moving on, proclamations and recognitions. We have no formal proclamations or recognitions this evening, however. I would like to recognize Public Works Department, in particular, Highway Superintendent Jake Perkins and his team, interim director Blaschek. Your efforts during winter, I guess, has now come a few weeks before spring. But amazing job down on the roads, and I know you're probably getting ready for this evening. So thank you to your group. Next, we'll take up the approval of the regular meeting minutes from the Select Board meeting of February 13, 2023. I would first ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions.
I say none.
Seeing none. And I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Exeter Select Board meeting of February 13, 2023 because we are not all physically here. All votes tonight will be taken via roll call. So, Madam Clerk, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, I'm going to start with you each time, just so you're ready.
Sounds good. Aye.
Okay. Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And I say aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. You caught me trying to speed things along. Thank you. Next, we had an interview this evening for the Budget Recommendations Committee. We had Mr. Timothy Gwyn interview, and I would like to take up his appointment if the board does not have any objection. With that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Timothy Gwyn to the Budget Recommendations Committee. There is no term.
So moved. Second.
So moved and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, and thank you again for volunteering. Appreciate it. Just jumping into our discussion items, we have the Town Clerk, Andy Kohler, here this evening to give us an Omni-ballot update. I think we've got good news.
Yeah, we've been testing the Omni-ballot. Democracy Live sent us the tablet and also a stick with the ballot on it, and I uploaded it to the system. And I did two tests. I did a touchscreen test, and I also did a test through the hearing aid or the headphones, and both of them were successful. So we immediately jumped on board and said it was a success. So let's move forward. I sent them a PDF of the two school ballots and the town ballot. They had it turned around within a day. I have to upload it on a stick, and again, upload it into the tablet, and I haven't had a chance to test it yet. As of Friday, we were still waiting on one of the school ballots. We have since received it. So I will test tomorrow, and I don't foresee any difficulties at all.
Terrific.
And also, since I have all of you here, just going to plug the polling pads.
I was just going to ask you about that.
The polling pads will be delivered on March 9, I believe. We're going to have our training that night at 4:30. It's not open to the public. It's just for the ballot clerks. I think all of you have been invited so you can get a firsthand look at how it works. So we are so excited. The ballot clerks are excited. And so I hope everybody sees how it's going to work. And I can't wait. It's going to be great for the voters. No line, no waiting. You don't have to wait in line. It's going to be great.
So that is good news. The polling pads and the Omni-ballot.
And the Omni-ballot.
And now, we will make a plug as a Select Board. We need everybody to get out and vote.
Right.
Record turnouts.
Yes.
No lines?
No lines, no waiting. And also, I just wanted to mention that the Omni-ballot system is not just for the hearing impaired or the disability. Anybody can use it. It's got a touchscreen, so you can get through and vote on your ballot very quickly. So if you want to try it, please do because it's open for everybody, not just the disabled.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I plan on doing it that way this time.
Anything else?
No, just many thanks. And I'm so appreciative that you and your team worked so hard to be able to make this happen in March.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Pardon me? Are we signed out, Nico?
No, I still have them here.
Okay. Just making sure.
No, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, next, we have a presentation from VHB on the roundabout proposal that is on the ballot.
Paul Velosage, Town Engineer, interim Public Works Director. Last May, we were in front of you with an intersection study. We had four intersections that we were looking at. From there, two intersections were picked out for a town warrant, and it is Article 5 for $798,000. There's two intersections in there. One is a roundabout at Pine, Linden, and Front Street. And the other one is some curb and sightline adjustments for Columbus Ave and Railroad Ave. At the deliberative session earlier this month, there was some discussion, some questions, and the town manager asked if the consultant can come back and review those two intersections that are on the town warrant. And with that, we have Greg Bakos. He is the engineer for the project and has been moving forward with the study. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Not sure how to initiate the slides. Let's see.
I think I'm going to knock on the door.
They were on a second ago, yeah. Don't touch it, Paul. Go down to the bottom, bottom right. Yeah, there you go. You're almost on it. Not that one. Seal it. One more, two more to the right. It's that little, it's that one. Oh, you had it. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So rudimentary. Let's see.
Makes me feel old.
Don't leave yet. It's working. All right. I think Paul already touched on the history. And I know some of you have already seen the presentations, including at the deliberative sessions, so I don't want to go into too much detail at the beginning. We evaluated traffic operations, you know, how good traffic is flowing, crash data. We looked at all the crash data for the whole town, all the intersections. circled in red the two that were moving forward that are in the current funding request. That is the Front Street at Pine and Linden intersection and the Winter Street at Railroad and Columbus intersection. So I'll start at the Front Street at Pine intersection. The conditions that we're concerned with, as you can see in the photo, actually, it's a very unusual geometry, and Front Street is the main roadway with all the, most of the traffic, but Linden Street and Pine Street converge just as they are getting to Front Street, and that's where it introduces that awkward, you know, who goes first, Linden or Pine, and then also pedestrians are left exposed there, crossing at that intersection. So we focused in on really the safety concerns at this intersection, although coming out of Pine Street or coming out of Linden Street, you can also experience delay. So the solution that we had put forward after studying several different alternatives was a roundabout solution, and what's nice about this is it gives a little bit more fairness to each of the approaches. Everybody has a shot to get into the roundabout. They have to yield to the cars that are already in the roundabout, but it really balances the traffic flow better than what's out there today. And I want to mention, too, just to try to put this roundabout in perspective, we're looking at an outside diameter of 102 feet, and if you're familiar with the roundabout in Foyes Corner, not too far from here, that's 104 feet, so just by comparison, and that processes a lot of cars. So the other nice thing about the roundabout is it manages pedestrian crossings really well. You can see that the crosswalks are marked on each of the approaches, and a pedestrian only has to cross one lane of traffic at a time. They can wait in the middle on the islands and then cross the rest of the, the rest of the crosswalk and really only looking in one direction at a time. So it's not only good for able-bodied pedestrians, but it's also good for people in wheelchairs or if they're vision impaired. So the roundabout will function very well from a traffic operations perspective, and we would expect it to really address the safety concerns at this intersection. The issue with this intersection today is that the vehicles that are coming out of Pine and Linden are exposed to broadside crashes, which are typically very serious. With the roundabout, you typically are seeing slow speeds, and you're only looking to your left and yielding to the vehicles that are in the roundabout, and typically, crashes are much less severe in this type of a situation. So that's it in a nutshell, what's proposed. So some of the benefits, it slows the front street traffic, which it's, front street's pretty wide open. There's nothing, there's nothing there enticing a vehicle to slow down. There's no, there's no traffic signals. There's no, you know, stop lines in that, in the area of the intersection. So it will slow those vehicles down, which is a big safety benefit. It improves the access for the side streets. It improves pedestrian access and safety, and it's expected to greatly reduce crash severity. There, with that plan, there would be some minor property impacts at the corners. We would not be impacting the park, which may be, you know, protected, and the, yes, certainly. It's not letting me go back. Start over. Knock on the door over there.
If you just hit the play again, you may be able to.
Yeah.
It's not touch street. The mouse is down there.
Here he comes. There you go, Paul. You can touch things. That's good.
Thank you.
All right, I'll carefully scroll forward. Did you want me to stop on the roundabout plan?
Yes.
Yeah. So the park is on the bottom left corner, and we're saying no impacts on the park. As I mentioned, I think that there would be some minor property impacts at the other corners. There is a driveway that comes in on the top of the roundabout there, off of Front Street, and that really doesn't present a lot of concern to me that, you know, coming in and out of that driveway won't really change. They'll yield to vehicles in the roundabout, just like they yield to vehicles on Front Street, and, you know, that should work fine. So at the deliberative session, there was, somebody reflected that there was a trial here for a circular pattern, and Paul and his staff were able to find the newspaper clippings from 1963 that showed that they had put out a, some type of a plant or feature right out in the middle, more or less where that center of the roundabout would be, and people were encouraged to go around, and it was left in place. According to the news article, it was left in place for two years and then eventually taken out. We don't know the reasons it was taken out, whether it was not effective or whether there were still crashes, but that does not resemble at all what this plan shows. You know, this is, the devil's in the details for sure. This is a much more advanced design than just putting a barrel with a sign on it out in the middle. And there was also a suggestion, suggestion at that meeting that we do a trial, that we somehow temporarily, temporarily lay this out in the field and do a trial, and we've done that in the past, but typically where you have the space. But here, we're requiring some property takings to make the circle big enough, and again, the devil's in the detail. To properly lay this out to give it a real test, it would have to match this geometry, and I don't think that's possible today. So we have tested roundabouts before offline, like in a huge parking lot. If people were really unsure, we've done that for fire departments so that they could see how it would be to negotiate that exact geometry when they were unsure. But to give this a fair test, I think it'd be very difficult in the actual intersection. So that's the roundabout, I think, in a nutshell.
Before you move on?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, please ask questions, because I'm going to have a hard time coming back.
The, and what do you call the spot between lanes?
Splitter islands.
Yeah. The one on Linden Street.
Yep.
Why is it curved to the left so that, to me, it looks like a car will be pointed at the center of the roundabout rather than
Right.
being shunted off to the right?
Yeah, very true. It's actually a function of the vehicles coming around and going onto Linden Street. We had to size everything here for truck traffic. You know, even though you may not have a lot of trucks, you have to make it so that trucks can get around, and we run what are called truck templates. In the computer, we show the wheel paths of all the trucks, and that kind of forced us into that geometry. Now, a car coming up to that approach would have no problem going around the roundabout. A large vehicle would probably use some of that brick apron that's shown there, at least his rear wheels would. So, but that, that's a good observation. It's not
Thanks.
a smooth geometry there. Yep.
Greg, can you keep that up for a moment? We have a member of the public that has their hand up and zoom.
Sure.
And I don't know if we need somebody in the back to let them on.
Yes, please. Don't leave the door unlocked. It's easier than playing the bell.
One moment, Mr. Clement. We're trying to let you in.
Good evening.
Good evening, Don. How are you?
I'm fine. Thank you very much for letting me zoom in this evening. I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Actually, the consultant.
For the record, just your name and address, please.
We talk about, I'm sorry, can you hear me? I mean, is it okay to ask questions now?
Please, for the record, your name and address.
I'm sorry, I'm listening to that.
It's a little muffled, Nico. I think you said
It is.
name and address.
Your name and address, for the record.
Your microphone might have some issues coming through.
Can you hear me now, Don?
Yeah, I'm on my phone. Can we try again?
Technology.
Want me to try?
Can you, can you hear me now, Don?
I can hear you, yeah.
We can hear you, too. I just, I just need your name and address for the record.
Certainly. Donald Clement, 5 Felmer Drive in Exeter.
Perfect. Thank you.
A couple of questions, if you don't mind. We talk about losing some property, property loss or property taking. Is that private property we're, we'd be taking for this, for this project?
That's a yes.
And is the potential compensation for property taking, is that included in the roughly $700,000 cost?
Yes. The, the amount of property we're talking about is really small, and, you know, it would be appraised, of course, but the value is, should be very small.
Okay. Our project shows some loss of, minimal loss of parking. Can you know exactly how many parking spaces will be lost?
I don't recall at the top of my head. I think it's, it's half a dozen or less. Legal spaces might be much less.
What do you mean legal space? I don't understand what legal spaces are.
Sometimes there are.
Parking on the street is legal.
It depends on how they're laid out.
In that area.
Yeah. If they're laid out correctly, then they're legal. Yeah.
What about the parking places directly in front of the inn? Are those public or those belong to the inn?
Thing on Front Street is in the town right away. I don't know if it's dedicated to the inn, but where it shows on Front Street, there would be a loss of five parking spots in that area. Over on Pine Street, because there is some setback from the intersection, at least on the east side, combined between the, both sides of the road, according to this drawing, we'd lose about three on each side. So total, it would be six, six parking lot spaces, excuse me, six parking spaces on Pine Street.
Thank you, Paul. I still, I still would like maybe sometime an answer, not tonight, but who actually has jurisdiction of those parking places to rec, diagonal, diagonal parking places directly in front of the Exeter area? Given that, second question, we talk about the, the radius of the proposed rotary. How does bicycle flow interact or people on bicycles interact in a rotary with vehicles? For example, do they have the right of way? Are they part of the flow? Is it wide enough to accommodate both a bicyclist and a car like Front Street is? Front Street being narrow, I understand, but a car and a bicycle can both navigate at the same time. Will the two of them be able to navigate safely around a rotary, this particular roundabout?
Yeah. So bicycles in the road have the same rights and responsibilities as cars, and they would function the same way as a car. They would have, they would have to yield to, to a vehicle that's already in the roundabout, just like a car would. They would proceed just like a car would. Typically, we make the entrances to the roundabouts fairly narrow, so it's not like you're going to have a bike lane or anything like that. The, the idea is that the bike would share the road. This is, it's intended to be a very slow, very slow speed operation through and around the roundabout. So, you know, bikes would just go with the flow, and they would behave just like, just like automobiles.
Hopefully automobiles will be recognizing their bicycles are in that, in that roundabout flow also, which is very
On the road.
Which is not, which is not a usual, typical type of vehicle apparatus in a rotary, in a roundabout, in my, in my opinion, or my recollection. Thank you. Are the rotary, the width of the rotary lanes, I guess, I'm calling them lanes is probably a better term. What is the width of them? In some cases, I mean, is it, I know we've talked about 104, 102 or 104 foot outside radius, but what does that translate to in the lanes around the immediate rotary or roundabout?
Um.
Are they 12 feet, 15 feet?
No, they, they
Eight feet.
I believe in this particular roundabout, I think we're showing them at about 16 feet, and then the, the brick apron on the inside is traversable. It's not
Right.
meant for cars, but they can, if they, you know, if they have to avoid something, they can traverse the inner apron. Apron is there really for trucks.
Understood. Yeah, I understand that. Okay. So we proceed, as the town votes and we proceed ahead with this, what will indicate in the future that this is a successful project? I mean, is there something to measure this against? I mean, are we reducing, will we reduce accidents? Will we reduce, you know, there has to be some kind of a measurement to, it should be a kind of a measurement to indicate a project is successful or not successful.
In this project, where safety is the first priority, that you would see a reduction in serious crashes.
Which we have had none, which we've had none of. According to the statistics that you showed, or the report showed, it's 27th on the list of the average of one accident a year. Am I correct in that reading?
And then secondly,
It's the 27th.
Secondly, it would be a, a community acceptance of the fact that now you can get out of the side streets without risking your life and, and not waiting so long to get out of the side streets.
It's called patience. So I know in the Winter Street project, which we're going to do later, you had three alternatives before you came down to the, the alternative you're presenting. Was there any other alternatives looked at this particular intersection, or do we go right to the roundabout solution?
Considered traffic signals, but it really does not meet traffic signal warrants, and you would actually have a very inefficient intersection if you included signals, because the Linden Street and Pine Street approaches would each have their own green time, which would really take away from the Front Street operation. So signals got discounted, and you also have a driveway right in the intersection, which would have made that interesting. So we
Right, absolutely.
Signals to roundabout, and that was pretty much it.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had this evening. Thank you very much for the answers. Thank you, board, for allowing me to participate.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Belanger, I think you had a question?
I do. So I won't repeat some of the questions that I had, because Mr. Clement already asked them. So you'll get back to us on the parking places, spaces in front of the inn.
of the average of one accident a year. Am I correct in that reading?
And then secondly,
It's the 27th.
Secondly, it would be a, um, uh, community acceptance of the fact that now you can get out of the side streets without risking your life and, and not waiting so long to get out of the side streets.
It's called patience. So I know in the Winter Street project, which we're going to do later, you had three alternatives. Before you came down to the, the alternative you're presenting. Was there any other alternatives looked at this particular intersection? Or do we go right to the roundabout solution?
Considered traffic signals, but it really does not meet traffic signal warrants. And you would actually have a very inefficient intersection if you included signals because the Linden Street and Pine Street approaches would each have their own green time, which would really take away from the Front Street operation. So signals got discounted. And you also have a driveway right in the intersection, which would have made that interesting. So we
Right, absolutely.
Signals to roundabout, and that was pretty much it.
Okay. Uh, I think that's all the questions I had this evening. Thank you very much for the answers. Thank you, board, for allowing me to participate.
Thank you.
Select woman Belanger, I think you had a question?
I do. So I won't repeat some of the questions that I had because Mr. Clement already asked them. So you'll get back to us on the parking places, spaces in front of the inn. Pardon me?
Paul answered.
He did, but we wanted to know who actually owns those spots. That's
They're in the public right of way, so
Okay.
I'm not sure of the question.
The question was, you were going to look into that, right? It's in the public right of way, but he, we weren't sure if they were actually designated to the inn somehow. That's a question I think we all should have an answer to. I'd also like to know how far away from this circle rotary? What's the right term?
Roundabout.
Roundabout. I knew I wasn't getting it right. Thank you, Julie. Where, where would we have no parking signs? How far away from this will we have no parking signs? Because we have a lot of parking right now in front of St. Michael's Church for church. We have parking on Linden Street near Gail Park. And also at the inn on the Pine Street. So just want to make sure.
You can kind of see actually, like, for instance, to the left on Front Street, there's a little green bump out on the south side of the road. That, that's where the parking would end. There's a, um, actually, I have a pointer.
Thank you. Oh, nice. Thank you.
So right there, that little bump out there would be the end of the parking right here. And then coming in this direction, it's where the, it's where we're trying to accentuate where the crosswalk is. The parking would end right there. And then, of course, on this side there.
I believe there's already no parking there.
Okay, that's good. Yeah.
Yeah. An intersection's bad enough. We don't want parking there.
On the inside, right. Yep. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, we can move to the next one?
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Oh, actually, I did have one question. Now, you don't have to go backwards. In the, the charts that you gave us and showing the ranking of the different intersections in town, this one came up on, when did you say, 27th?
27th, yeah.
And so on the slide that has the 2018 master plan intersections, the collision per, collisions per year is, where did it go? One. But on the chart that you gave us with all the intersections, it says six.
I think that was a five-year study.
Ah, okay.
Or period, I guess. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So this is just a summary of the types of benefits that would be expected and some of the impacts, minor property impacts we talked about. And then the approximate costs back in 2022 when we did the study. At the deliberative session, there was a suggestion that we not do the project and just redirect traffic instead, away from that intersection by making Linden Street one-way away from Front Street, at least until you get to Gil Street. So that vehicles heading towards Front Street would take a left onto Gil and then stay on Gil and come out on Front Street. So we considered that, you know, it's a possibility. You would be funneling, you know, significant traffic through a much more residential street, which is Gil Street. And I'm sure those people would pack this room if we suggested it, but we didn't think that that was a good, you know, diversion through, especially the first piece of Gil is very narrow. Then, then you have, you know, 90-degree turn on a residential street with all that traffic. Plus, the piece from Gil up to Front on, on Linden would now be one-way. So to come into the school, for instance, from the south, you know, you, you would either have to go around the roundabout or around the intersections to come back down. Or there may be another driveway that you could come in, but you'd, you'd lose two-way access to part of the school and then all those houses between Gil and Front Street. So it's a change in traffic patterns. That alone, I think, would be a big step too. So any questions on that?
No, but I did mean to say, thank you for looking up about the, the test thing because I couldn't remember it. So I was only a year old when that happened.
There you go.
Now I know why I don't remember it.
Well, Paul was there, so. So on to the next intersection, Winter at Railroad and Columbus. Some of the concerns at this intersection are related to sight lines and vehicle speeds, particularly staying on Winter Street from north to south. So the recommendation here is really minor improvements to get a little bit of improvement in safety. And particularly at the nose of the island right here, just making that one small geometric improvement allows cars to move up from the stop line, which is now here, all the way up to here. So that they can see around the corner a little better what's happening on Railroad. They can see up, up the road, what's happening on Winter. It's just, it's a minor improvement, but it should improve safety for those folks. And then what we also observed is southbound vehicles on Winter zipping around the corner, I guess you could use that term, make it difficult for people on Columbus to come out. And it's also unsafe pedestrians. So we're showing just extending the curbing out a little bit more on both, of both sides to push the through vehicles out a little bit and slow them down. And then a very minor improvement is just to add stop lines on this cut-through piece down here. There are none today. So that people do stop. For this one.
In this option, is there a reason why there's not a crosswalk, probably safety reasons, but I'm going to still ask the question, to get from, you know, the Winter Street Columbus Ave over to Railroad Ave? There, there's a crosswalk in front of Columbus Ave, but there's nothing for pedestrians coming out of Columbus Ave to be able to go to Railroad Ave to walk toward Front Street? Is it because of the line of sight and it's just not a safe area? Have a crosswalk there?
I think part of it is there's no sidewalk down here to receive them.
But there would be. I mean, so if we do put crosswalks, sidewalks there, is it possible to put a crosswalk there?
If you put sidewalks, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that would be recommended. Yeah. So we also looked at a roundabout there and three-way roundabouts have their issues. The geometry is not as good as a four-way. And I should say, this geometry for a three-way is not great because you have more or less straight lines on two sides, which doesn't slow the, slow traffic down a lot. And this was really, um, not embraced, I guess, when we proposed it earlier. We also looked at a more simple realignment of Winter Street, which would bring it in so that they'd come to a stop right here. That would eliminate that higher speed movement along the edge in this direction. So. But again, that's a fairly expensive, impactful type of a solution. So the recommendation was to go with the small improvements first and see how it goes. And, um, and if things really don't improve, maybe in the future, do something more like this. This just shows the three options that we looked at. And that was it.
Did anyone else notice the cost for three?
Yeah.
What was it? Please, because
I'm sorry.
I know I'm not in, in favor of roundabout there. I just don't think it's a good idea. But one and three are definitely, yeah.
350,000.
Thank you. You're a little quick with your
Yep, I was.
Bucker.
Were there any questions?
Any other questions for Greg on either?
No, my question is more for the E911 people or street naming people. And you're going to hate it. But a long time ago, about 120 or more years ago, Railroad Ave used to be called that from Front Street all the way to Park Street, Cross Epping Road. And that would make sense to me.
No, I thought of that with the option three, that we would not went to Street to go
To stop and
And then, yeah, it wouldn't, but yeah, that's a bridge we'll cross. Where, where are we at with thinking about sidewalks, Paul, for, for that area? Do you know where they're on the list? I, I know our list isn't set in stone. It's, things happen with our, our list. But do you know if, if that area?
Our list from Public Works dealt mostly with repairing existing sidewalks.
Okay.
No sidewalks there, meaning it probably didn't have a, a lot of weight with the Public Works folks. That doesn't mean that you can't use some of the sidewalk monies to go ahead and fill in gaps and stuff. And actually, we heard a few comments at the deliberative session about sidewalks right there also. And even if it was on the list, how we do it at Public Works is let, let's get the, where, where the town folks want new sidewalks, listen to that and go in those locations. So we, we don't necessarily prioritize them. We do have a certain amount of weight of which ones are a little bit more important. But we don't enumerate number one, number two, number three.
I know you don't, and thank you for reiterating that. It's important for people to understand that even your road construction, if something comes up like Linden Street, then the sidewalk money gets prioritized to Linden Street while everything's already dug up and being redone. So, but I have had people ask me about the, the sidewalks so that people in that neighborhood can get safely to Front Street and back. It is a little dangerous walking. It's my neighborhood. I understand it. So to, to be able to get over from the Front Street area into those neighborhoods, it's, you're walking on the side of the road and, yeah. Lot of children and things like that. So at some point.
Doesn't the town planner have a master plan of sidewalks or new sidewalks?
I'm not aware of one, especially in this location right here.
Yeah, he was doing it on Front Street, I know on Epping Road, when new developments were happening. He was getting the new developments to do intersections. So it's almost piecemeal, but the plan is to get them connected. And that's where the money came from and the issue with Columbus Ave at the other end. And that was for sidewalks. It's not like our, our normal sidewalks, it's more painted, but that was the idea of connecting. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions on either intersection? Greg, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
So our last discussion item this evening is a continuation of the conversation on the Squam Scott River, River Siphons Project. I have a feeling that we'll be talking about this for a few more meetings to come. But Mr. Velasic is here and I believe you have somebody else with you this evening for any questions?
Yes, we have Kevin Garvey from Wright Pierce Consultants. He was here a couple of weeks ago too, when we gave you the last update.
Perfect.
And if we have technical questions that in my explanation is not clear or I ramble, we'll bring him on up and clarify.
Well, I thought you did an excellent job explaining it so that we could understand it the last time, Paul. And I'm very appreciative of that because you broke it down where we could all understand it.
Thank you.
And we need to understand this, so take, take your time.
Yes, thank you. I had the flu and I could understand you just fine. So thank you very much.
Very good, very good.
Reason why I wasn't here.
There's, there's, there's quite a few things to talk about as far as updates and also an explanation of what's been happening out in the field. So a couple of weeks ago, when I was here, we were still on our fifth attempt from the Swayze Parkway to try to drill a six-inch pilot hole from Swayze Parkway over to the mill side of the river. And, and I reported at the time that there was very slow going. I think we were hitting like 50 feet a day or something like that. Right after that meeting, the drilling progressed faster. It was more double that drilling effort or 100 feet a day. And things were looking a lot better. As we got closer to the mill side and started coming out of some of the rock areas, we had some fluid that had worked its way up through the sediments and, and surfaced on the, the bottom of the river over at the mill side. And they call this a fluid release and it's really the bentonite clay that I explained that they use to help lubricate the drill bit. What we did is we notified the DES officials at that time about this fluid release. And it's not toxic, toxic or harmful to the, to the environment. So on Thursday, February 16th, we were able to get to the other side and the drill bit came out of the ground, which was quite a relief. And it also, we had talked about allowing the contractor to do a conductor barrel. If, if they had to pull out and change the head of the drill bit, which we were thinking a couple of weeks ago that that was almost a certain, but no, they were able to get through. And what a conductor barrel does, it, it's like a straw that goes down to, to the ledge that we were drilling with. So if you pulled out the drill bit and then you went, changed it and tried to find that same hole again, you were assured if you threaded through that, that pipe, that straw to get back into the hole and then you could continue drilling. So right after that hole was complete, on Monday, February 20th, we had the seismic graphing effort that we talked about also. And that's where a boat came in with this, um, this instrument that hopefully we can find what the ledge profile is, not, not only along our alignment, but because we have multiple pipes to finish this project, can we find an alignment that did not have this, this sledge problem that, that we are experiencing? However, because of the bubbles in the sediments and we were warned that this might not work exactly very, you know, perfectly, we were not able to get usable data on the ledge in the river between the existing siphons and all the way down to the boat launch. So, so it was an effort that we tried, but it proved unsuccessful in mapping the bottom of the ledge. So also about the same time, they tried to do some more drilling. This time, they, they put a larger, um, a larger drill bit, a reamer, so that they can pull it back towards the Swayze Parkway side to enlarge the hole. And, and when they're drilling, I'll go back to that bentonite clay. When they were doing the pilot hole, it's about 100 PSI. And so there's some force behind it. We were thinking that's what caused when you hit the sediment, some of that, that fluid release to happen. And when you do the reaming part, you reduce the pressures down to 40 PSI. So it's, it's a, it's a good reduction. And, and also there's this material that they could add to the bentonite clay. And, and here again, I'll, I'll use my layman's terms. It's got that consistency of more like paper mache type of thing. So that if there's any fissures in, in the soil strata, that maybe it clogs that up and doesn't allow the release. But the, the release happened again. So we stopped operation there. Went back to the Swayze Parkway side. Now we were going to ream the hole bigger from the Swayze Parkway side. While this was happening, we, we had some discussions with our consultant and town manager was there too, and Melissa, of trying to figure out the next course of action now that this pilot hole was finished. And we, we went back and, um, one of the items that I talked about for this particular drill that we're doing now was maybe we can make the hole that we're doing now was maybe we can make the hole big enough that maybe two pieces, two pipes could fit in, or maybe three pipes could fit in. But because of the fluid release happening over on the mill side of the river, the subcontractor, the drilling subcontractor did not recommend, or did not, yeah, did not recommend in a staunch way that we should not try that because of the fluid release amounts. So we also went back to a couple of years ago when we were trying to decide, could we potentially line the existing pipes? And we're jumping ahead right now, assuming that we would have at least one siphon barrel installed bi-directional drill, does that now give us an option that we do have one pipe to go back and try to do a cast-in-place pipeliner? And how that works is it's basically, it's not pulling another polyethylene pipe, PVC pipe through. It is basically like a sock. And what you have to do is you got to go in and you got to grout the holes to keep the water from coming in. You pull the sock through and then either through heated water or some ultraviolet, depending on how they choose to do it, harden after they make the pipeliner fit to the inside of the pipe, then harden that and that'll be your pipe. But again, with discussions with the consultant there, the way to fix those holes in that would be by pressure grouting. You'd get there with some sort of mechanism that you could push grout into those holes. But because the two siphon barrels are right next to each other and both of them have holes in it, if you're trying to grout one, it could be filling up the other with grout. So that is still not a recommended pathway past this step. So at the end of last week, we got some more not-good news. And we got the news that the reaming prior to Thursday was going pretty good. It's still 100 feet a day we were getting even with the new one. We had the shaft break on the drill. We know it's on the Swayze Parkway side of the drill head. We don't know exactly where, whether it's close to the drill rig or it's out underneath the river. But right now, we've got the reamer head stuck basically in the center of the river, plus or minus 50 feet or so. With that is, how do you get this pipe out now? How do you reconnect it? Because it broke on the Swayze Parkway side, which was the side that was able to, that does the twisting motion, it makes it less likely to be successful. And the methodology then would be to go back over onto the mill side of the river and use a pipe that can fit over the shaft and weld that until you get to, well, the first piece would have to be a little bit bigger piece because where the drill head is right now, there is a swivel on the drill head on the mill side of things, which does not allow that torquing ability to happen, that swivel just spins. And so there would have to be a little bit of an enlargement to fit over that swivel. And then as these pieces are welded and pushed towards the drill head, eventually you get to it and then you can push from that side. And if we were pushing, you're still going to need to take it out of the hole eventually. And now that we've got a 12-inch head going through there, the conductor barrel that we were talking about now needs to be, I don't know, 18, 24 inches, something like that, a lot larger. The consultant, the contractor and his subcontractor is suggesting there's a very low likelihood of this being successful. And if you run out some of the numbers, some of the numbers are quite expensive that you could almost pay for 25% of the next barrel that we would try to do. So it's that expensive with a low likelihood of being successful. So that is where we're at right at the moment. It was news at the end of, very end of last week. We were having meetings today to try to quantify some of these things. Now, to jump to the end, like you asked, is what do you think any of this is going to cost? And again, these are all preliminary ideas. And I said it was going to basically, if I had to take a gander a couple of weeks ago, was it was going to double the cost to get one barrel. And the cost that we're talking about is the contractor bid. Contractor bid was about 1.63 million. So a couple of weeks ago, the number was, you know, a feeling of what it was going to be for the one barrel, 3.2. And doing some of the numbers and still now using two more weeks of time, we're about, if we started a new drill to get one successful barrel, we're thinking the cost will be somewhere around 3.5 million.
For one barrel?
One barrel.
And the project initially called for three, correct?
Still calls for three, and we still have to decide what we want to do to bring the project to wholeness of being able to pass our current flows and also accommodate future flows. Now, one of the things we talked about at the meeting before we knew that this got, this head got stuck at the end of last week, was we were asking the consultant to go back and potentially ask for a design waiver from New Hampshire DES to potentially allow two barrels instead of their standard three that they require now. But with that, we also got to check the minimum and maximum flows to make sure that the hydraulics of two pipes will work. So that's an activity that we'll still need to figure out. And with that, it's not good news, but that is what has been happening over the last couple of weeks.
No, thank you, Paul, and I appreciate the complete thoroughness of your updates and the transparency over the last couple of meetings. And I know how hard you've been working along with the assistant town manager with weekly meetings, sometimes several times a week. So I mean, your efforts are appreciated. You're the bearer of the news, and we understand that. I have a couple of questions, but the one I want to ask first is, what concerns, if any, do we have for the neighborhood or the area that this affects?
So the immediate concern for the neighborhood would be, there's only so much flow that can accumulate in the existing siphons. If the, let me go a little slower. If the existing siphons still stay operational, that's the if, then I don't have much concern. The immediate concern then would be noise and the disruption of construction. But if something happened to the two existing siphon barrels, there's only so much flow that can be accumulated before it starts backing up into some basements and that sort of stuff. And we have a handle on how much it can because in the past, that did happen. And it happened quite a few times until we did some of the I&amp;I work at the JD Hill project about a decade ago. So that would be the immediate concern of how to deal with that. I talked last time too about our contingency plan, and our contingency plan would have to be implemented where we would have to take a pipe and string it from JD Hill Ave, where the appropriate manhole is, where there is a pump system that we can put in those manholes, in the manholes? Yeah?
Above grade.
Excuse me?
It'd be above grade.
Oh, above grade, so there would be some noise concerns there. And pumped over to across String Bridge. String Bridge would have to be one-way because of the pipe being next to the sidewalk area with some Jersey barriers, but we can tie into a manhole that has just enough capacity downstream for that flow to be put in at Water Street.
How long, if your contingency plan is needed, how long would it take to implement that if there's a problem?
The contractor has already put pumps on notice that they might get a call in short notice. In the meantime, well, I don't know if we can use some of the existing pipes over on Swayze Parkway that were supposed to be the siphon pipe. Those would be available for use. We'd have to do some calculations on those because I don't think we were anticipating one quite that big.
Right.
We weren't thinking quite 10-inch pipe. So in the meantime, what would happen is that factor trucks would be called so that we can keep the elevation of the effluent in those manholes down to a level that doesn't allow backup into some of those basements.
And how sustainable is that contingency plan? For how long?
The contingency plan, and I don't have the report in front of me, would be sustainable once you have the pump operational and the force main installed from JD Hill all the way over to Water Street. So it would be, we would have monthly rentals and that type of stuff. It would be a nuisance, but it would be sustainable for, you know, half a year or so.
So it's a short-term solution that would ease the concerns we have for folks and their property and their belongings at the cost of the nuisance, of the inconvenience, of traffic flow noise and the additional cost to the project, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so how long before we would get those pumps, the pump that is needed? Pumps, I don't know.
About how long do you think, knowing that our contractor has already notified the pump rentals?
I think the pumps, to be honest, like within 24 to 36 hours. As far as if they had a fuse pipe, that would be what would take probably the longest time of everything.
So what Kevin said, and I should probably invited him up here, was that if the force main can't be used, the pipes that we have over on Swayze Parkway, you'd still have to cut those up. You have to bring them over, you'd have to fuse them together and lay everything all out. The pump could be on site within a day or two.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go crazy with this, but I'm gonna still follow up with this. Would the pump comes, how long before the contingency plan is set up and viable, working?
So the contingency plan would be started right away because of the factor trucks, where we would vacuum out the effluent in the manholes. So having it fully operational, what, four days?
A week, guys, is the time out of the contract.
So you'll have the trucks in place until the three or four days it takes to get the pumps and the pipe in and everything lined up and ready to work if needed? I just want the people in town who might be affected by this to know that there's a plan, you know, not a great plan right now, but a plan to try to prevent anything bad from happening in their homes.
Yep. So certainly as we move forward here, there's more costing, there's more understanding, there's more recommendations from all of Wright Pierce and their connections with directional drills too.
So is the project stalled? And you explained it really well, but I just wanted to make sure I understand, the project is stalled right now from the last time you were here with not-so-great news and then a day later, we got an email with the great news that you were going ahead, double what you had reported and it was all looking good. Are we stalled now because a piece of equipment broke?
We are stalled right at this moment. And our decision...
But is it because a piece of equipment is broken?
Because of the shaft that it broke, correct?
So does the contractor or subcontractor have insurance?
They do. And that's something that we were going to explore also, of owning the cost of this delay and this portion of the project.
Because I'm just, you know, again, to Select Woman Belanger's point to the folks at home, you know, no fault of the towns, we have a project stalled because essentially a piece of equipment broke that was owned and operated by a contractor or subcontractor that's now going to add additional expense to this project that was already going over budget. I mean, I'm asking, you know, can we look into what responsibility the contractor and the subcontractor bear? Because it seems to me that, you know, it's not, they made the recommendation to cease, but they've made the recommendation to cease because their equipment broke, unless I misunderstood you.
No, no, you understand that correctly and your point is well-taken, and it is something that we will have to explore for sure.
Thank you, okay. And I know that you will. Any other questions?
No, you guys have asked and answered, so.
Is it fair to say we'll see you next week?
Or might do in two weeks.
We meet next month.
You just were invited. How's that?
Thank you.
If that wasn't fair.
But all seriously, Paul, thank you. Before Paul leaves, Select Woman Cowan, Select Woman Row Trioliff, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions. You guys had asked the ones I was interested in.
Thank you.
None from me either.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the board's indulgence, recognizing the time of our town staff, could we...
Thank you.
...reverse permits and approvals with the abatements and credits? We have two staff members here that don't need to sit through that. If we can jump over to that?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, good night.
Pause that. First, we have our finance director, Mr. Stevens.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks. Hopefully I'm here with slightly easier news than the last act. And thank you for letting me go first here. I have just a couple of administrative items related to 2022 to go over with you. You have a couple of memos in front of you, the first of which... first of which is relates to water sewer impact fees. The town is authorized to utilize water sewer impact fees to offset debt payments on water sewer capital projects from time to time. The bank balances have grown to the water balance is about $56,000. The sewer impact fee bank account is $96,000. So what I discussed with Town Manager last year was basically taking one year's worth of fees from each, and each year using that towards debt service. So here I am in January, or now February, recommending that we use the 2021 collections to offset debt service for this year. The total to be transferred is $42,000, $13,000 from the water impact fee account, and $28,000 from the sewer impact fee account, leaving $44,000 in the water account and $72,000 in the sewer account. We would just do this once a year.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
No.
Okay. Corey, providing I have this right, I'd entertain a motion to transfer $13,716.56 from the 2021 water impact fees and $28,428.71 from the 2021 sewer impact fees respectfully to the general fund for a total of $42,145.27 to offset debt payments in water and sewer capital projects.
That is correct.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item is related to snow and ice deficit funding. In 2022, we had a budget for snow and ice operations of $313,201 with actual spending of $400,704, resulting in an overage of $87,500. The balance in the snow and ice deficit fund as of 12/31/22 was $153,630, and I am requesting that we utilize $87,000 of that to cover the overage in 2022. This would leave a balance of $66,630. As you all know, there is a warrant or an article in the upcoming warrant asking voters to add an additional $50,000 to the fund. And assuming, or assuming that were to go forward, that would bring us to a balance of $116,630. So we'd have roughly a $35,000 to $40,000 decrease in the overall fund balance from last year after the approval and then the use of the funds here.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Then I would entertain a motion to authorize a withdrawal from the town's snow and ice deficit fund in the amount of $87,000 to cover spending in excess of budget during FY2022.
So moved.
$87,000, is $87,000 okay, or is it the 503?
I just rounded it to the-
Okay, thank you. I'll second. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Selectwoman Gilman, second by Selectwoman Belanger, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Corey.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Deputy Fire Chief Jason Fritz with us, who's waited patiently this evening. Thank you, Jason.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So I had submitted a few items from the E911 Committee. I'd like to bring your attention to the 31 High Street, and we're looking for a recommendation to accept the new address. The 31 High Street is listed, it is part of the PEA faculty project. It'll be a new building on the forefront, right on High Street, a building that does not exist currently.
Just give me a minute because it's not in the order in our package.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. It's just, I want to be on the right. And that's the one I had a question about. That's why it was important to make sure I was there.
Sure.
Pardon me?
It's the next page, the map, anyway.
Yeah, I, thank you. Is it okay to ask a question? Did I interrupt you?
No.
Okay. So I left a message for our town planner, not realizing he was on vacation this week.
Okay.
I went back to the planning board meeting minutes about this project. So you might be able to answer this for me, but I wanted to kind of talk it through with Dave Sharple's. I don't understand why they're looking for an address on High Street when that project and all that housing, Tan Lane was redirected, if you will, and everybody is coming in and out at the lights. So why would there be an address on-
Gilman Lane, you mean?
Yes, what did I say?
You said Tan Lane.
Sorry, that's another one. That's another conversation. No, Gilman Lane. So Gilman Lane is gonna have a new, a new name, already does, right? That little-
Stucky.
Stucky, there we go. And then Gilman Lane-
Yes.
Is going to start at the lights on Portsmouth Ave, High Street-
Yes.
Water Street, whatever. Oops, sorry, people. So all those houses that are being built there are gonna come in and out there. So I don't understand why that one house would have a High Street address.
Because the front door of that house will be on High Street.
But they won't have access to High Street, so that doesn't matter?
No, their driveway will be off of Gilman Lane.
Okay.
But without-
I got the whole front, the front door thing. I just didn't understand why their front door, it just confused me a little bit. If there, there's no access to High Street there, why they would have a High Street address?
I have a High Street address and my driveway's off Buzzalab.
You have a side address. You have a side driveway, right?
Right, I don't have anything on High Street. Well, I have one-
Anyway, okay, so that's it. It's only because their doorway, their front door-
Sure.
Is facing High Street, we're not gonna have to worry about anybody putting a driveway there and coming out at that?
Correct. We had actually talked during the technical review committee about having a secondary means of egress, if you want to put it that way, another road that wasn't actually gonna be advertised as a road. It was gonna be the, I'm gonna get this wrong, and Kristen would probably not be happy with me, but it would be a surface that we could use for emergency vehicles, but that would be it. But we decided that that would be very, very confusing and misleading to a lot of people.
Because that conversation came up at the planning board, I sit on it. And we were told that there wouldn't be no problem with the fire trucks instead of getting in at the lights. We wouldn't need any-
Correct.
Other vehicles coming in at that intersection to cause confusion.
The other problem that we had was having the fire apparatus turning, if they were headed towards Portsmouth Ave from downtown, making that sharp corner, because that would, the width was not going to allow for the width of our trucks to make that corner. So that's why we extended it to the intersection at Portsmouth Ave.
Okay, so that's, can you repeat that again? Because, because I think that's something that should have come out at the planning board when we were having the sidewalks and the conversations. So I'm a little concerned if I'm understanding what you just said correctly.
So to put that access between 25 and 31 was gonna be too tight, if I remember correctly. And, but the bigger-
Were you talking about at the light itself?
No, 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 before the light.
Yeah, I just, thank you. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're all clear from the planning board level and what was approved, and now seeing this, it confused me a little bit.
I understand.
And, you know, there was no other access to that intersection other than the light.
And the other problem was having road access so close to the light. That was gonna be another question.
Right, but that question came up, and we were, if I remember correctly, we were told there was no problem with the fire apparatus, because you guys have to get down to the well, to the stadium and all that. And that was a concern of mine, and I was assured that that was not gonna be a problem, so.
Well, having the intersection with the light, the traffic light-
Yeah.
And having the width be better, according to their engineers, it was gonna be a better access for us.
Right, and now we're finding it's tight, no?
No, 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 no. That's why we didn't go with that-
Okay.
What would have been that access between-
Make sure.
25 and 31.
Okay.
Sure.
So it's only about the front door facing High Street, or-
Correct.
Okay.
It would be, it'd be difficult for emergency responders to drive via a building, knowing that that's the building that they're going to, but not recognizing the number and having come around from the backside. Because if we go over there for a fire, we're gonna access it right off of Water Street.
So, so my question, it's really hard for me to see these maps without my other thing. That new name of the road, which you said-
Stucky?
Thank you. Is there a cutoff to that road, or is that still gonna allow fire apparatus to get down through there?
No, fire apparatus still go through there.
Okay, so, so there is another way in there, other than the entrance at the lights? It's that road. You're gonna be able to get in that light.
As soon as you turn onto Gilman, at the new beginning of Gilman, which is at the intersection with the traffic light-
Which is at the lights, yes.
As soon as you drive in, Stucky is going to be kind of a spur to your left, as Gilman comes around to the right before it makes the left-hand turn to head towards the stadium.
All right, I'm fine. Just want to make sure.
Thank you. Good question.
I believe if you look at the map that I included for the Gilman Lane, if you can look at that, might illustrate things a little bit easier.
Just hard for me to see. Thank you. These are a little too small for me. I actually have a magnifying glass of the light, but I didn't bring it with me.
I can make it smaller.
You can make it less bright. That would be helpful.
Melissa, can you pull this map up, the one in the Gilman Lane?
That's what I'm looking at.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
So like I said, as you-
Of course.
Come into Gilman Lane from the intersection, Stucky is going to be a little bit of a left-hand turn off of Gilman.
Stucky Lane's just that little J shape.
It is.
It's a dead end.
Okay. Right, I just didn't understand why this would have an address with no access to Portsmouth Ave. It seemed odd to me. I got the front door part of it, but without a driveway, and we wouldn't want that. The idea of this development was that everyone was coming in and out at the light, so.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Moving on.
None from me.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the new address at 31 High Street as listed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Which one do you have next?
All right, while we're in that neighborhood, we might as well talk about Gilman Lane.
Okay.
So there are several existing structures that need to be renumbered, as well as some that will be added for this project, and they are as reflected in my letter. My recommended motion is that you accept the renumbering of the new and/or renovated buildings on Gilman Lane as listed.
Okay, any questions? I would entertain a motion to approve 7 Gilman Lane to be renumbered to 15 Gilman Lane, 8 Gilman Lane to be renumbered to 13 Gilman Lane, 10 Gilman Lane to be renumbered to 12 Gilman Lane, Unit A and B, and 11 Gilman Lane is a new building.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
All right, moving on to Tan Lane. So one of the, Tan Lane was one of the streets that was identified by the state as not conforming to the regulations. So we've simply renumbered them, starting from the beginning of the street, which is actually at Main Street, and numbering it towards Front Street. So the recommended motion is to accept the new numbering of the buildings on Tan Lane as listed. And there's a spreadsheet attached to it on the second page.
I have one question.
Yes.
Where the map shows Fisher Theater, they've now added a new dormitory.
That's correct.
That address is a Front Street address?
Yes.
If I remember correctly.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Not that I would entertain a motion to change 9 Tan Lane to 16 Tan Lane, 14 Tan Lane to 29 Tan Lane, 12 Tan Lane to 19 Tan Lane, 16 Tan Lane to 5 Tan Lane, 18 Tan Lane to 1 Tan Lane, 34 Main Street to 3 Tan Lane, 8 Tan Lane to 5 LeMond Place, 10 Tan Lane to 7 LeMond Place, and 12 R Tan Lane to 8 LeMond Place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right, and the last one is a resubmission for Drinkwater Road. The property on Drinkwater Road was subdivided into two parcels. The remaining parcel will keep its original number, and, excuse me, will get the new number, and the remaining will continue with the old number. And it is as illustrated, the recommended motion is to accept the new numbering of the divided property on Drinkwater Road as listed, and I've also included the map to reflect those changes.
Any questions on this one?
No.
And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to renumber tax map 106 Lot 1 to 52, and to renumber tax map 106 Lot 2 to 54.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you tonight.
And I enjoyed the profile-
Oh, thank you.
On the Extra Fire Department Facebook page.
Appreciate that.
You've had some interesting experiences.
It's been an awesome career. Certainly has been.
It was fun to read.
So, thank you.
Fun to read. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Madam Clerk, if we could go back now to, we have veterans credit, two disability exemptions, and several elderly exemptions.
Yes, indeedy.
Group them as you-
I would love to. Without any concerns from the other select board members, I will, would like to group these in amounts. There's only three or four different amounts, but they're all for the same tax year. So I'm gonna go ahead and try to do it all. We have no veterans credits, so we're gonna go to disability exemptions. I move to approve a disability exemption for map 60, Lot 9, in the amount of $125,000 for the tax year 2023, and map 95, Lot 64, Unit 226, for $125,000 for tax map 2023, tax year 2023.
Second.
Substitution second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 118, map 104- Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 905. Map 103, Lot 13, Unit 20. Map 54, Lot 4, Unit 125. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 320. Map 95, Lot 64, Unit 160. Map 65, Lot 75. Map 73, Lot 246. Map 54, Lot 4, Unit 6. Map 52, Lot 43. Map 81, Lot 31, and Map 71, Lot 2. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $183,751 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. Map 64, Lot 105, Unit 93. Map 95, Lot 64, Unit 321. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 309. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 121. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 420. Map 55, Lot 24. Is that second?
Could I, before, oh.
Did I lose one?
I may have missed, did you get Map 95, Lot 64, 321? She didn't, okay, I'm sorry. Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
And clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $152,251 for the tax year 2023 in the following amounts for the following properties. Map 95, Lot 64, Unit 224. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 705. Map 73, Lot 280. Map 95, Lot 64, Unit 101. Map 28, Lot 4. And Map 87, Lot 8, Unit C13.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you.
All right, not done.
Not done yet.
Mr. Chair, I move to deny two elderly exemptions for the following properties. Map 104, Lot 79, Unit 325, and Map 74, Lot 39.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Many thanks again, and well done.
I need a drink water.
We'll turn it over to you, Melissa, for the town manager's report.
Thank you. On behalf of Russ, the town man, Russ Dean and the town manager and myself, the following report, led by Corey Stevens, the finance director, and Steve Bailey, the network administrator, the town will upgrade its financial and HR system, NUS, starting next Thursday and Friday. The call is for employees and residents to be back up and running by Monday, March 6. On Thursday and Friday, March 2nd and 3rd, residents will not be able to make property tax payments online, however they can come into the office. We do not expect this to cause any major issues at the time due to billing cycles. An update on 149 Kingston Road. The town manager's office is working with the Exeter Housing Authority to explore a way for the town's 149 Kingston Road property to potentially be used as an affordable housing unit. We have a long way to go and a lot of things to determine if this is possible, but it could be an exciting opportunity. In regards to the Swayze Parkway flooding, town staff will be meeting to discuss flooding issues at Swayze Parkway and what could be potentially done there. We need to talk about what groups or stakeholders should be involved and what possible options could be completed. So there'll be more to come on this in the future.
Thank you.
The Recreation Department is planning to apply for the Community Center Investment Grant through the state of New Hampshire. We expect to bring this to the board at the next meeting on March 6. They'll be proposing the idea of using Town ARPA funds as a match, because it is a match program from the state. At this time, they have $20 million to give to, for local community center development. At the request of the select board chair, I reached out to Attorney Mitchell for an update on the Swayze Parkway petition. Attorney Mitchell reported that the court clerk said the judge had rendered a decision this past Friday, February 24, and Mitchell is expecting to receive the decision via mail Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. Kristen Murphy, thank you. Kristen Murphy notified Russ and myself today that the town did not receive the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, which was a grant submitted to try to offset the cost of Rain's Barn. And in your packet, as requested, we did have a completed version of the Darren's Economic Development Newsletter that goes out, so that was put in there.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Yeah, welcome. That's it, take any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
The economic development aspect with the Parks and Recreation Department's summer scamp, summer scamp scholarship.
Yep.
How is that handled? Does it have a separate fund? Does it go into the Parks and Rec revolving fund? Or how are people chosen to get those scholarships and?
Sure, so this is a new program. I will have to follow up with Greg, but I can tell you that this would go into the rec revolving account. I know that we do typically use, we partner with the RUIN program, which works with the local community and the schools to determine eligibility for need, but I will confirm that for you and get back to you.
Just a similar thing came up at the State House, and one of the reasons it failed is because we didn't have that kind of
A revolving fund, yeah.
Who was gonna be able to get it, so.
Sure, we'll get back to you on that.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, why do we get these like three weeks too late?
It was in a previous board packet, but I think if you remember, it was cut off, so we resubmitted it.
Thank you.
So it was put in the correct timeline. We just, I think a sentence or two was cut off, so we wanted to make sure everybody could see it.
I got that as an email and thought it was important information to be added to our packet, so it's really late, because it wasn't there.
Okay.
This was an add-on and then.
Thank you.
No problem.
Speaking of the packet for next week, Attorney Mitchell sends the decision, and then Mr. Dean can incorporate that into his town manager's report, please.
Of course.
Thanks. Okay, select board committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger.
I only have one. So Conservation Commission was February 21. They approved, Wakefield Thermal is coming to town. They're expecting to bring 150 jobs. They are refurbishing an existing building where Osram is, and when they subdivided out in there. So they're refurbishing one building and doing an addition, a 3,000-foot addition. There were four small wetland areas that were mayor-made. They didn't, because they're mayor-made, there was no need for conditional use permit. The application was approved, but they also voted to have the chair send a letter to the planning board regarding two concerns. One is invasive species that are in that area, and another is the stormwater drainage concerns and the proximity to our water reservoir. There was an update on the Rain's Barn repairs. They had gotten underway. The clapboards are all painted and moved on-site. They painted them away and then brought them back in. Now the contractor's working on the window repairs. So you'll see the windows are boarded up. We did lose a few windows during the recent high-wind event. There is a four-part training being put on by the New Hampshire Fishing Game for monitoring mon, mon or whatever, yeah.
We know what you mean.
Thank you. Butterfly populations that start at February 22. Pollinator pathways of New Hampshire will be hosting the sessions. And Exeter will be hosting two of them, March 22 and April 5. We're looking for an upgrade on T-Mobile, so we have that, so thank you, Melissa. Trail report, there are still a few blocked-off sections. People are obeying the signs and the things that are being put in place so people don't still use them, so that was a good thing. The signs, they've been trying to do, update signs and things out on our trails, and happy story, a person was lost with their dog and they were able to say where they were because they remembered one of the new signs, so that was good. High wind events, the recent high wind events caused a lot of downed branches and a few signs were knocked down. Rain's Trails, there's some downed trees from the high wind event, and there was some discussion, because some of them, so we have a lot of volunteers that take care of our trails and maintain them. One of them is to go out there with a saw, but some of these are too high, so they were gonna look in to see what the options are about how, we don't want our volunteers climbing up with saws and. They're still talking about a possible snowshoe event, and if there's no snow, maybe a nature walk. They were gonna talk to Parks and Rec about the possibility of snowshoe availability, because they've had them in the past, so yes. They talked about the All Life Festival this year, if we're gonna have another one. There was a little, they were a little disappointed of the turnout, but as Allison said, sometimes it takes a few years to get things back on people's calendars, and COVID really kind of got a lot of those things off. But it was a great event, and they showed up the weekend of the festival, the day of the festival, so that worked out really great. And I'll wait on that one, because one of our members who's been with us for 10 years on that committee, on that commission, has a lot of other responsibilities, so she's really talking about maybe stepping back for a little bit, but 10 years on the committee, we are very fortunate to have the people who volunteer. And their next meeting is March 14, which is voting day. Don't forget to vote, everyone. Our planning board meeting of February 23 was canceled. And then we have another meeting, so I don't need to talk about that. If I could just, would you indulge me for one moment? Because I was sick and really out of it by the end of the last meeting, I just wanted to, if I could, talk about the Housing Advisory Committee, that we had the Housing Authority come talk to us, and I just wanna make sure I was clear that right now, Exeter owns and manages 107 public housing units and also manages 173 rental assistance vouchers. And it's really important to reiterate that our waitlist for public housing is currently at 295 with three-to-five-year waitlist, and that will depend on income level, residence and employment, or employment, when it becomes, when something comes up for them. And our voucher program has 306 people on it with a one-to-six-year waitlist. Yeah, so they do a great job. We learned, there were some comments about Meeting House Place at other meetings that I've had on all of the boards, and for some reason, there was some misconception that Meeting Place was Section 8 housing or voucher housing, and it's not. It was, and there were a few of us that learned something new that day, because we just assumed that, you know, when you hear that. But they do offer up to 50 units to our Housing Authority, and they help tremendously by doing that. So I wanted to say that publicly and thank them. But we do have some landlords that have multi-units that also work with our Housing Authority unit to try to help with this. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, and they're gonna come back to the board, to the Housing Advisory Committee, and then at some point, I've invited them, when we can get them on the agenda, to come talk to the select board.
Let me know.
In case anybody has any questions, I think it's important that people know what our needs are, not just for workforce housing or any housing, but also our elderly housing and
Absolutely.
and all the people in need, so, thank you.
Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman.
Just thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a one-minute Heritage Commission non-meeting. We had, didn't have a quorum, so we canceled the meeting. Work for the Heritage Commission, the grant that we went for to do a historical survey of the town hall, we were not awarded that grant. We have a couple other options, but we need to talk about it as a committee of interested parties, which I'm starting to get together. I have HDC and heritage and arts so far. And the other thing is that it's time for the Heritage Commission to apply for a grant. We're gonna do another survey area of town for the historical impacts of, or important aspects of the, of an area. We haven't decided which one yet. And state stuff? What did I give you, 20 pages, something like that?
Well, why don't you, you know, this is correspondence, but while you have the floor, please let us, give us enough here.
Well, actually, I'd prefer if there are questions, because so much happened in those two days, my mind is still catching up.
All right.
So if people have questions from what they read on public, if you have questions, you know, please read the report online. I'm gonna try to make it even simpler next time.
Okay, all right.
No, but this is helpful, thank you.
The other, the other thing to go along with, I'm sorry, I wanna play off your Conservation Commission thing. In the governor's budget, he's proposing to eliminate different licensure bodies, or different licensures at all. And one of the things that they're repealing is licenses for the apprentice soil scientist and apprentice wetland scientist, and to eliminate the Board of Natural Scientists. And, you know, I don't know about you, but there's a lot of soil science that goes on and developing in New Hampshire. They repeal, they wanna repeal the licenses for soil scientists at all and wetland scientists, so I'm really very concerned about that, and I, right now, the budget's with the Finance Committee, but it's gonna come back to the House when that's done. And it's time for people of conservation-minded, keeping your natural life not pure, well, pure, yeah, and protected, need to know about this and need to let us all know that we have to move, we have to keep these. There are some other ones in this long list I can forward it to you. I'll put it in correspondence.
I mean, it's really important to be licensed so that we know that people who are doing these jobs have the skill set to do them.
Yeah, you know.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Yeah, I've been traveling most of the week, so I haven't had any updates to share.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan.
I have not had any meetings. Quietly.
And I didn't have any either, so I guess we'll have more to talk about next week.
Does anybody have any questions about what I reported from the House actions? Yet. Okay. I won't have any activity for the whole month of March, my committee's done. So I'll be watching Senate bills and making sure we are keeping tabs on those.
Keep us posted on those, too. Okay. We covered most of the correspondence between the revised letter from Darren, or rather, the uncut-off or rather, the uncut-off, and then this. We also have a legislative bulletin from NHMA reviewing the Board calendar. We meet again next Monday on March 6. The election is March 14, and again, everybody get out and vote. There will be no lines with our new polling pads.
Really great.
Easy access for everybody to be able to vote. And then we will reconvene as a new Board on March 20.
Thank you.
Melissa, I just need the RSA real quick. I want to say C. And I apologize, I didn't write that down ahead of time.
Quick, let me look it up.
Believe it's C.
Sorry?
B.
B, so 91A-B, semicolon B.
91A3. Go ahead, do the whole.
91.
91A.
Three.
32B.
B, yeah. I wasn't sure if you were looking at.
No, no.
Sorry.
So I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A32B.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The Board will be moving into non-public.
Thank you.
Okay.